Good evening. I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council. It is Monday, October 15th, 2018, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Counselor Freeman?
She is excused.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
Here.
Counselor Herrera?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Here.
And Youth Counselor Ferris?
Here. Thank you very much. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Top of the agenda tonight. Are we doing the proclamation? Okay. All right. No, I don't have the proclamation itself in front of me. We have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Each October, we have an opportunity to take time and make sure that we remember that there are members of our community that suffer from being victims of domestic violence. We have families that love these people and want to be able to help in a constructive way in a community that wants to wrap their arms around them and make a difference in helping people survive, but more importantly, help prevent domestic violence from even happening. I asked Jane Downing from the Center for Hope and Safety, she has sent some information here in English and Spanish, and I encourage everyone to take information with you tonight. And the district attorney was not able to make it tonight, but sends her regards as well. We feel this is very important. This has been a top-of-mind issue for our community, as it should be for all communities, and to make sure that our families are safe and secure. So with that, I'm going to read a proclamation for this month. Whereas the impact of domestic violence extends beyond individuals reaching into families and communities, and whereas in the last year Marion County has experienced four domestic violence homicide crimes resulting in the deaths of seven victims, four of whom were children, and whereas the Marion County District Attorney's Office received 1,222 law enforcement reports of domestic violence last year, filed 970 domestic violence cases and filed 71 juvenile dependency cases with domestic violence allegations, and whereas Marion County Courts received 1,012 requests for protective orders last year, and whereas the Center for Hope and Safety received 26,526 contacts to their program last year and provided 5,633 nights of shelter, and whereas Marion County Victim Assistance Division provided services to 1,604 victims of domestic violence last year, walking alongside them and giving them a voice in the criminal justice process. And whereas we know as individuals, we can make a difference by speaking up and reaching out to help victims and survivors. And whereas, therefore, I, Kathy Clark, the mayor of City of Kaiser, along with the Kaiser City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and resolve to honor those who have died and acknowledge those who have survived by supporting meaningful services that create safety and hope for survivors in our community. In witness whereof, I am here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kaiser this 15th day of October 2018. I will sign that right now, and we will get the, these two, the district attorney's office, all right, and to maybe a copy to the Center for Hope and Safety. All right. Any comments while I sign this? I'm looking forward to a day when I don't have to, but more importantly, I'm looking forward to a day when we all speak up and have the tools available to help people have healthy families. Thank you all for supporting this. Committee reports. We have volunteer committee recommendations for appointments to the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, Kaiser Parks Advisory Board, Kaiser Planning Commission, and Traffic Safety, Bike Ways, Pedestrian Committee. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee met on October 4th to review applications and interview candidates for openings on the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, Parks Advisory Board, Planning Commission, and Traffic Safety, Bike Ways, Pedestrian Committee. Committee is recommending the following applicants for appointments. Kaiser Points of Interest Committee Jill Bonnie Hill for position number six and Sherry Gottfried for position number seven, terms expiring on November 30th, 2021. Parks Advisory Board Matt Lawyer for position number eight, Wayne Frey for position number nine, terms expiring December 31st, 2021. Planning Commission Christopher Ray for position number seven, term expiring September 30th, 2021. And for the Traffic Safety, Bike Ways, Pedestrian Committee Wayne Frey for position number four, term expiring December 31st, 2021. It's recommended City Council accept this recommendation of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint the applicants as outlined above. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Since the meeting of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, I have received an email from Christopher Ray, and he has decided this time that this will not be a good fit for him and has asked that his nomination be withdrawn. Did I forward that to you, Tracy? I did, okay. Christopher Ray. He's a very, very involved in a number of other civic organizations and thought this might be a better fit at another time. So I really wanted to thank him for taking the time to put his name in and also for letting us know what will work best for him. With that, Counsel President Parsons, do you want to put a motion on the table?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council accept and approve the appointments to the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee Jill Bonnie Hill for position six, Sherry Gott for position seven, the Parks Advisory Board Matt Lawyer for position eight, Wayne Frey for position nine, Traffic Safety, Bike Ways, Pedestrian Committee Wayne Frey again for position four.
Seven.
It's been moved on the seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendations of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, save for the Planning Commission appointment, and appoint the applicants as have been listed. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And since Counsel Freeman's not here tonight to bring this up, we were left with, did I bury that already, that little card? Yep.
Here it is.
There we go. All right, so we all have these, these little cards, and they have a list of opportunities for people to volunteer. If you want to get involved with the city committee or commission, please go to the website kaiser.org, fill out the application, and when an opening in the committee that you are interested in comes up, you will be contacted to come and talk with the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. Every single volunteer makes a huge difference for our community, and we encourage everyone to, if they're interested, to come down and sign up and get involved. It's a lot of fun, and you get to make a difference for your community. So watch for that. Thank you very much for these cards. We can pass them out to our friends and neighbors. All right, I don't think anybody else who signed up for public testimony is under public testimony. Is anybody here to give a committee report? Going, going, gone.
Dylan.
Well, David's not here. He's the one who's supposed to be here. Do you want me to give the parks?
Come on down. The prize is right.
Do I need to state my name?
Yes, please.
Okay, I am Dylan. Live at 765 Ventura Street in Kaiser. So the Parks Board met last week, and there's not a lot going on aside from the opening of a new park, or refurbishment of a park. So we raised funds last year, as everyone knows, with a new fee to do some maintenance and improvement on some of our current parks. So at, is it Meadow Creek?
Meadows.
That's what it's called. So that one got completely overhauled. As you guys know, we went out on our, on our Parks tour and visited that, and it looks fabulous. We've gotten apparently a lot of word that people in the neighborhoods love it. So that was kind of the main point of conversation at our last meeting that allowed us to go on.
All right. Anything else? Counsel Herrera?
I believe you're, they're getting ready to do the paving for the paths.
Right.
And Country Glen is, they've already cleaned it up and it's ready to be paved. They had gravel. It's going to be widened six feet, and a few other parks, I believe.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things going. I don't know all the, all the specific parks, but...
They're taking advantage of this great weather.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Yeah, we've got a lot of extra time on that. So they're, yeah, they're widening the paths to be ADA compliant.
We're happy in my neighborhood.
And the new bathrooms going in at the Rapids Park are still being worked on. We don't have an exact timeline, but this winter.
Yeah, I think we got a brief update on Friday on that, that that work is coming along, and then, did the concrete get poured down at Claggett Creek, the sports court?
Oh, yeah, a new basketball court.
Yeah, yeah. So there were some before and after, well, before and about to pour pictures at the open house last Monday, and so that's getting done. So all over town, I encourage people, take a look at your park. There's work being done in absolutely every park, from mowing to maintenance to repairing stuff that's just been waiting for this, so. Super exciting time. And then if people have ideas about repairs they want to see in the next cycle, when is the next Parks Board meeting when they can come and talk to you?
It'll be the second Tuesday of November.
Second Tuesday of November. Okay. November 13th at 6 o'clock.
Yep.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for pinch hitting. All right. That does take us then to public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on this agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have no public hearings scheduled tonight, so I will start with Rochelle Ferris. She is going to talk to us about the McNary Mentor Program. Welcome Rochelle. Thanks for coming tonight. And you all should have her business card at your table.
Yes, I put my business card on your desks. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name's Rochelle Ferris. I'm the College and Career Specialist at McNary High School, and we are super excited to start a new mentor program. In order to make this work, we have to have volunteers from our community to be able to sit down and talk with students about what their plans are for after high school. On the screen on the back, I have a slide. And then also, for public members, when you came in, I also have these handouts that look a lot like the screenshot that you can pick up and have that information to take with you tonight. But basically, what we're going to be doing, it depends on the number of mentors we get. We are going to prioritize our seniors, of course, to start meeting with mentors one-on-one. We're hoping for a good turnout for parents and community members to volunteer for this. There is training that is required, and we have training scheduled at McNary on October 24th and 25th. 24th is during the day. It's from 11:15 to 12:45. And then on Thursday, October 25th, we have an evening training from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at McNary High School in the College and Career Center. Now, if those dates don't work for you, you don't have to worry, because we have partnered with Salem Kaiser Education Foundation, and we have a trainer that can meet with you at any time at your convenience. So if, if these particular trainings don't work for you, that is just fine. We, we can fit you in. And that information also is on the handout as well as on my website. On the College and Career website, I want to just point you, because I didn't have internet access here, what I did is I took screenshots of our website. So if you go to the McNary website and then click the Guidance tab at the very top, it says College and Career. You would go to that tab, and then you get to the College and Career Center webpage. This is my main homepage, and you should take a look at it anyway. There's lots of great information on there. But specifically, the mentor program, you can see it top and center. It says mentor program, and you would click that tab to get you to this page. At the bottom of the page, it gives our upcoming mentor trainings, which I do have additional trainings scheduled for January and March as well. But you can sign up and register for those trainings by clicking the big McNary cell there right in the middle. And when you click on that, it will take you to the McNary Mentor Training signup, and you just enter your name, your email address, your phone number, and which training date you plan to attend. Or it gives you the option at the bottom to, to click that you would like to sign up at another time with Valerie at SKEF. So those are the options. Again, we're looking for individuals who are passionate about our community, who want to see students succeed. We are a world-class high school, and we're looking for world-class volunteers, okay? And, and this is a great opportunity to kind of just speak into and encourage students. And we're, we're really trying to get students signing up for this program who may not know what they want to do. There's a lot of seniors, a lot of juniors out there who just aren't quite sure what their direction is. And speaking to somebody in the community who's been in the business world, who's been in, you know, has life experience can help, maybe give them direction. And if you feel like you want to make a difference, community members, if you feel like you want to make a difference, I would encourage you to email me. My email address is there, or sign up for one of the upcoming trainings. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Counsel Herrera?
I just want to thank you. By the way, for those of you that don't know, Rochelle is our youth counselor's mom.
Yes. I've got connections.
I'm probably in trouble now for saying this. And I met Rochelle last year, but this is a great opportunity for folks listening on TV to connect with our high school. And I tell you, there's nothing more rewarding than mentoring those young kids. It's, I plan on participating, and, and it's very exciting. We hope to see different, I hope to see more of us from like the city, maybe. It doesn't take much. I will be doing greeting in the morning, just one day a week. It's really cool, but great opportunity and thank you.
And you can volunteer as much or as little as you would like.
Right.
Our mentor opportunities are on Tuesdays and Wednesdays to start out with. That's kind of the days that we are setting aside for space, so that's, that's where we're going to start, but we're going to grow this program. But we want to start small to go big and make it successful along the way. All right?
Very good.
Thank you.
Counsel Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I assume you're also taking this presentation to the chamber and Rotary and so forth, too?
Yes, it's already been to Rotary.
Yeah, I figured you would.
And I am pushing information out to Danielle Bethel.
So for any parents out there, how are you getting this information to students, and how, how do the students even kind of know in what areas they might want to be mentored?
We are just getting that information out advisory this, we're starting with our juniors and seniors, so advisor, during our advisory period this Friday, they'll be learning about the mentor program, and that information will get out to our students. I'm also pushing it out on all of our social media sites, Facebook, my McNary Facebook page, Celtic Territory, my McNary College and Career Center Twitter account, all of those social media sites, I'm getting the information out there, and word of mouth.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for doing this. This is very, very necessary.
Also, I think a phone dialer's going out this week as well.
Yeah, that, that would be great, because, you know, parents care.
Parents care, absolutely.
Well, and the vast majority of the Dulce Park community actually don't have students in school, either they haven't started yet, or like all of mine are graduated, and, and we need all of the Dulce Park community to know that they can speak their experience and positiveness into our, our students, the next generation. So I really want to encourage people who don't have students in the school, but maybe you own a business or want to see our students succeed, you know, in any capacity to, go ahead and sign up. We've got to reach throughout the community.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for doing this. I encourage anybody watching to get a hold of Ms. Ferris at the high school, go on the website and get involved, because these are the young people that we want moving into leadership and jobs and careers and building businesses, and keep Kaiser moving into the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So let's move on to music now. Mr. Koenig, you are here tonight, and you're going to talk to, talk to us about the fee waiver for the Kaiser Community Band, which will have a performance right here on November 8, 14th, a salute to veterans and America. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. You've already done work for me. I didn't know that last meeting that you waived fees for the November celebration, but thank you very much. So my job here tonight is two-part. One is to ask for a fee waiver for the certificate of insurance for that performance coming up in November. And also, we have scheduled another concert for you here, and that is our Christmas in Kaiser concert, which will be in December on the, I think I wrote it down, 19th of December. And again, I'm asking for waivers and fees for that one also. As you know, we are a nonprofit organization. I know you went through our history at your last meeting. We are self-funded. We are funded by donations from our members. We do not charge money for our performances, and it's part of our reason for being is to serve the Kaiser community and the surrounding areas. So that's as simple as I can ask. Questions?
All right, any questions? All right. We are excited, and anybody who wants to join the band?
Yes.
Do you have a website?
We do. It's KCBand, like Kaiser Community Band, dot org. And we are in the web. We have a pretty good-looking webpage. It has all the information anyone would need. So all of your children and grandchildren, husbands, wives, you're all welcome.
Well, you know what, so many people spent time learning how to play instruments in school, and then you kind of graduate and move on, and you go, that'd be fun to start doing again, and this is a fun group to do it with, and you guys are really good.
Every year, we have someone that joins the band that hasn't played for 30 years or 25 years, and they just want to get back to doing it, so.
And see, that was okay. So if you're thinking about going, no, it has been, it's been too long, no, it hasn't.
That's right. No, it's never too late.
All right. Well, thank you so much, and we're looking forward to the concerts.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving down the list, let's talk air service. So Brent DeHart is, talked to us about the, is that, Mid Valley Commercial Air Service Steering Committee. Welcome. If you, if your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Brent DeHart from Independence, Oregon. And Madam Mayor and esteemed counselors, I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you. And I'm really here to just give you an overview of what effort has already started taking place, some, answer some questions that you might have, and then ask for your support. So I'm just one member of an ad hoc steering committee of about 15 individuals that are made up of interested citizens that want to see commercial air service back at McNary Field in Salem, and also representatives of the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce, Travel Salem as the marketing and tourism arm of the region, and SEDCor as the economic development arm of the region. All of us kind of came together about last January, and we took it upon ourselves to buy data to see if there was consumer demand for air, air service and how many people are flying, which the data was unbelievable. It was really, really encouraging and convincing in terms of how many people are flying out of our 570,000 people catchment area, that people are buying tickets to fly out of Portland, and they're bypassing Salem along the way. And we believe that, well, we know from the data and the industry standards, that we need only capture about 10% of those people. Or one time, and every 10 times you travel, you need to choose Salem instead of PDX, and we can easily fill a couple of flights today and make an airline profitable. So we're out seeking broad regional support, because we're applying for a grant out of the Oregon Department of Aviation. It's called a ROR grant for Rural Oregon Aviation Relief. It's funded by a dedicated fund of taxes, from aviation fuel taxes, and with this money, we'll accomplish two things. One, we'll be able to pay for an air service consultant that we've worked with so far this year, to carry us through the rest of the process, and also to fund a marketing effort, which was put together by Travel Salem, covering a couple of years. And these things, this could require quite a community effort and quite a broad effort to attract an airline, because there's a lot of competition all across the nation of medium-to-small-size communities that want air service. So to come, to be able to get the grant and have funds for a marketing plan, which will span 24 months, starting before the service starts and into the year and a half afterwards, will be very much a selling point in terms of getting more federal grant money and getting an airline to commit and so forth. So a lot of things about McNary Field, people don't realize, community awareness is going to be huge for us, so thank you for letting me speak. But in 2007 and '08, we had service from Delta Airlines flying to a city nobody wanted to go to, and it was a rousing success. And I say that somewhat facetiously, because passenger demand is really north and south coming out of this region, Seattle, Las Vegas, Phoenix, L.A. Basin, and San Francisco area. But we got flights to go to the hub in Salt Lake City, and it was a large success done in primarily because of the spike in fuel prices that we saw in 2008, as you might recall, when fuel went from $40 a barrel worldwide to 145. So everybody thinks that effort failed, and reality is, it was widely supported by the community, and Delta was making money, and Delta had, in January of 2008, wanted to expand this service. And by October, they were gone, in a real tragic loss to our region in general. So that's what happened back then, and now it's 10 years later, the economy's better, there's more population, there's more demand than ever, and the traffic to Portland is horrible. So some people are donating money just so they don't have to drive on the 205 again as long as they live. Now I'm one of those. So our sequence of events to go get this grant, and that's what we would utilize, the Kaiser City Council's letter of support, should we get it, is to prove to them that there are entities, governments, employers, that are supportive. I've already received letters of support from Western Oregon University and Corbin, from employers such as Garmin and NORPAC, and OSU actually, believe it or not, is very interested in this service, because they don't want to fly out of Eugene, believe it or not. OSU Athletics does not want to fly out of Eugene. Sorry. So yours would be added, and I provided the city recorder a couple of samples. There's an effort in Coos Bay, and there was letters there provided by their county and their city representatives for support. So at this time, it's really just something we can include in our packet, that say people are supportive of this in our region. Back to the name, Rural Oregon, this program is for rural Oregon, which under Oregon rules is basically everything but Portland. So if it's 500,000 people or less, under Oregon's definition of rural, it is rural. Plus, as we all know, we live in primarily rural counties. We all do. So be it Polk and Marion, Lynn and Benton, thank you. There's actually six primarily rural counties that we think that would feed into Salem, and we think it's going to reduce traffic congestion, a lot of blood pressure, and also help in things like occupancy taxes, car rentals, hotels, restaurants, tourism, keeping money in the community, keeping people overnight in the community. And of course, with the addition of Amazon and the addition of Home Depot and NORPAC's expansion, and Hennessy Frozen Foods, and so, how diversified our economy is, plus the agricultural sector, which includes a lot of traded sector trading, this is going to be enormous, and my last, enormous in terms, in terms of economic development. And our last comment, and it's probably a smaller factor, but it is a factor, is that we're working now, there's a whole group on, on emergency preparedness. And when the cascade event happens, and I know you've all been briefed on that, no one's driving to Portland. There'll be bridges out. So the ability to get people in and out and commercial air services and citizens to travel without going to Portland, we think will be a large part of emergency preparedness for the whole region. Would you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Any questions? Counsel Anderson?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. DeHart, appreciate you coming tonight. This is an exciting project. I know a little bit more since I've been involved a little bit, and I'll mention that a little bit later when we take action on this. But, and I apologize if I missed this, but did you touch on the potential impact of this on our wine industry? on our wine industry here? Because that was one thing that really stood out to me compared to that, and I'm sorry, I can't remember that airport that's down in the California wine region, but just the impact that we, that could be brought to Yamhill County and Willamette Valley wine reese is just really astonishing.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Anderson. And we, and it's one of the reasons why Travel Salem is so positive about this. They would like to see more destination travel come in. Not only will it be great for us to be able to get out and do our travel, but also for people to fly in and be a destination. Santa Rosa, I think, is probably the area you're thinking of. With all the fires in Napa County and the other areas in California, it's a very good opportunity for Oregon to grasp some of those tourism dollars for people to do wine tourism. So we think, yes, it can bring people to the region who would not otherwise come. In the grant application itself, we mentioned it, for a lot of destinations in our beloved Willamette Valley, it's too much to get there in a day or a weekend trip from Portland. So out of Salem, it's easy if people want to see the Oregon coast and Lincoln City and Depot Bay, and it's easier to get to Detroit if you're going into the mountains than PDX. So tourism, actually, the state, the city, the county, and the state tourism agencies have all provided letters of support.
And another important factor that really struck me in hearing some of the information about this was the sports teams that are already coming to and staying up in our area whenever they're playing U of O or Oregon State. You know, a lot of folks don't know that that's happening right now, and wouldn't it be better if they could fly into Salem versus maybe coming in through PDX or something like that?
Indeed. And those charters will be a big piece of it once we gain more awareness, and just a little bit more infrastructure. But another thing everyone, we would encourage everyone to know is, the infrastructure's already there. We don't have to put in an extra runway, we don't have to put in an extra terminal, we don't have any, need any. The one thing we need is a little screener box that you walk through, so see if TSA can see if you're carrying anything. So the infrastructure for Salem is, actually, the runways are approximately the same size or bigger than the runways you see at John Wayne Orange County Airport, and that surprises a lot of people. So this is not, it's over a mile long, it's 5,800 feet, recently refurbished this summer, actually, so, and a brand-new lighting system that's put in two years ago due to some issues, and instrument approach landing and a tower. There's a lot of things going for it, the infrastructure's already there. So we can't wait for them to land and us to be able to board.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Brent, some of you may know I was part of the conversation in the chamber when we had the service before, and it was disappointing when they left. But I know one of the things that I was really impressed with when I attended the informational meeting from the chamber was the cost factor, that that was a weakness before, it was very expensive to fly Delta before, even though we had the service. It was something that people struggled with unless you were of a different, you know, medium. Do you want to address real quickly the, the cost savings and what they're, we're looking at doing differently this time, since I think it's a huge improvement and we'll really support it?
Yes, and actually, that's part of, going to be part of the community conversation as well, because we need the community to support it. We need the community to say, I will pay more than flying out of Portland. Frankly, the smaller the aircraft, the higher the operational costs per seat. So with the Delta effort, Mayor Taylor at the time spoke to Delta, and there was an agreement that they would price around $30 more than Portland. And when it did, they, the seats filled out. Then there was some sort of computer glitch or private pricing glitch, and it did spread, as you said, and it spread $60, $70, $80 more than Portland, and that's when we lost some of our passengers. So we want people to know that the operational costs are higher, but so is their time. And we see people in the business community, because all of this is an ad hoc community, and the money that's been raised and spent, which has exceeded $25,000, has all been out of, interested people's pockets. But we want people to know that, hey, if it's $30 or $40, we'd just still fly out of Salem. If it's $50 or $60, we'd just still fly out of Salem. I think round trip, it's $25, $30 in gas to go to PDX, plus the parking is more expensive. Plus, if you're getting reimbursed by your employer, be it a government or a university or anything else, the costs are extraordinary. So we are hearing, and we have made an effort to educate, like Department of Administrative Services, they're fully aware of the costs of parking and reimbursement for mileage, and that that, even if the ticket price is higher, it's a lower cost of travel, both in wear and tear and in time, because time is money. And it's one of the reasons why we see such a large business community component, because they're willing to do it to get there and back in a day. They're willing to do it to not spend the night at Portland for an early morning flight because they don't think they're going to miss it. I don't know if any of you have ever done that, but early morning flights, people are spending $100 to go spend a night in Portland, where they could just get dropped off at the Salem Airport. So we expect a price differential, but from the research we've done and the community poll that we did at a forum event, people are willing to pay it. Did that help?
Yes. Yeah. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And we will take this up under item 8A.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'd like now to hear from Jamie Harris, who's going to talk to us about Satellite Gaming.
My name is Jamie Harris, and I am a resident of Kaiser, live 755 Evans Court. I have lived in Kaiser for about three and a half years, and I think it's pretty imperative that I use a chunk of my five minutes to just say thank you to all of you. This community is really awesome. I come from a small community in Idaho called Emmett, Idaho. It's a little town, and I'm just, I'm really glad to be here, so thank you. A lot of the things that I want to talk to you today about Satellite Gaming, I don't really have the time for. But what I'll simply say is, we have an event coming up on November 2nd. I'd like to tell you a little bit about what we do, and extend an invitation to, to not only you, but maybe some youth that you might know in our community. Satellite Gaming is a youth gaming organization. We started out of a church. It's actually the church that meets right here at the community center on Sunday mornings, Lake Point Community Church. I am on staff there as the youth pastor. This idea originated as a way to just be, something that would be provided for the youth in our community of Kaiser. We basically decided we want to find a, create a positive place for students to get together and play video games, because what we acknowledged was that if you got a room full of about 100 students, and you asked them how many of them played football, a good chunk would raise their hand. You said, how many of you played basketball? A good chunk would raise their hand. Same with volleyball and tennis and golf. The moment you said, how many of you play video games, just about every hand in the room would go up. There you go, Roland, we got to talk. And the concerning thing is, then we ask ourselves, well, what do, what do we as adults in this community provide for each of those different social groups? So what do we provide for the football player? We provide an opportunity for them to participate on a team where they learn how to play football, but they also learn camaraderie and brotherhood and receive mentorship by coaches. We provide the same thing for basketball, and these things are great. These things are awesome. It's, the next question we ask ourselves is if, is if every single student in the room would, not every student, but close to every student would raise their hand and say, yeah, I play video games. We then have to ask ourselves, what are we providing for these students? And we celebrate a leather pigskin ball going through two yellow posts. When a student does that, their name goes in lights. We jump in the stands, mom screams, that's my baby. But when a student successfully lands what's called a 360 no-scope in a video game online, which most of you may not know what that is, it's a gaming term that's really impressive. But let me tell you this, it is something that takes a lot of skill, and it's something these students work really hard at. The sad thing is, when that happens, we yell down to the basement, put on your headphones, you're being too loud, and they continue to recluse and hide in the basement. So what we're proposing with Satellite Gaming is not that, not that we want to encourage this reclusiveness that may come with video games, and we acknowledge that there's a lot of damage that may be unseen that happens when video games are done to an extensive amount. And what we've basically decided to do is try to pull every single positive avenue we can from video games. Actually, our youth counselor here, she won an art contest that we hosted and received a digital art tablet. So it's cool to see you here, serving in the way you are. That's great. And we give away some cool prizes. We celebrate our youth when they accomplish something that is extremely difficult. The crowd goes crazy. We have about 500 people that have shown up to our last two events at Claggett Creek. We host parent workshops, and because we post, host these workshops, we're able to use the facility, and it's, it's quite a blessing. The parent workshops will actually be led by Dylan Duran, and perhaps I will make a visit, but Dylan does a great job. He teaches about ESRB ratings, which would be like PG-13, R when you see a movie. Video games use a similar system called ESRB ratings. And with that, we also teach about how your students can, can actually monetize their video games. There's a student that was, actually, he was a student at McNary High School. He used a video game called Minecraft. He created his own server, and he and his, a small group of his friends, they pulled in about $300,000 in a year and a half, and he was the primary source of income for his family. All that being said, we want to try to make more stories like this happen. We're sponsored by Northwest Christian University. They consulted with us when they started the first esports program at a university level for Oregon, and we just, we just want to see these kids receive love. We do about 11 after-school programs in Salem-Kaiser, and we're proud to say that it all started right here in Kaiser. And we just want to invite you to our event, tell you a little bit more about it, and answer any questions you may have.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. Questions? Counselor Ferreira?
I just want to thank you for, that's really positive stuff. I, I think it's great that you're using, is 500 kids show up?
About 500 people have been to the last two, 360 competitors, about 60 to 70 volunteers, and sometimes a couple hundred parents just to cheer on their kids.
Is it true that, I've, I've heard, and I don't know for a fact, they operate college scholarships for?
Yeah. NCU is actually going to be?
Somebody said there's more of that than there is in regular sports.
There's, there's quite a bit there. A lot of schools will use the similar model that they use for the athletics program. My brother is, he plays on a Overwatch team, that's a video game, in Bellevue, Nebraska, and they, yeah, he received scholarship for that.
Well, thanks for all you do, and Lake Point does a great job about reach for the youth. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Roland.
I love what you said about, that you want to make sure that we celebrate the accomplishments and the skills that our young people have, and some are more visible than others, and to find a way to build community and build relationships with common interests with young people. I think that's just fabulous. So thank you for being so creative. And would you please make sure that you send out information that we can share out on social media as well, anytime that we can let folks know what's going on in the community? As I was telling Ms. Ferris earlier, not all of our kids, now my kids do play, a couple of them do play video games. But again, not every adult in the community might know, so if we have an opportunity to build those relationships and mentoring opportunities, it's all to the good.
Yeah, absolutely. And we actually want to be a resource for anybody in the community that has youth that play, whether it be actually joining our workshops and hearing what Dylan has to say, or just reaching out to us online saying, hey, I've got a student that's addicted, what do I do? I'm sure many of us have those stories.
Without a doubt. Well, thank you so much, and thank you for sharing tonight. Appreciate it. And now I'd like to invite up Shalissa Swaughery. She is a candidate for Marion County Commission, and would like to spend some time with us this evening. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Sorry, I guess I'm really excited to be here tonight, but just also listening to some of the great things that are going on here, especially the, the video presentation, and thinking about how so much, so frequently with my own children, I'll be more, not so much turn that down, but how long have you been on that? I think it's time to stop. So, but hearing that celebration of our kids and getting them, you know, out from the isolation and into, you know, a space in that 500, that, that was incredible, you know? That's, that's incredible. So yes, my name is Shalissa Swaughery, and I'm running for Marion County Commissioner. I live in Salem, so you're neighbor to the south. And I guess a little bit about my background. I am a former middle school math teacher turned law professor. So I went to Yale for law school and practiced law, worked for a federal judge for a little while, but returned to teaching, because I'm a teacher. I taught law at Loyola New Orleans for a few years before coming out here to Oregon and teaching law at Willamette. And so I taught at Willamette for about seven years until about 2015, I stepped down, 2015, 2016, after we lost our older son. Depression runs in my family, and even though he had a doctor and a counselor, we lost him to suicide. So I stayed home with our younger daughters, that's what my family needed at the time, and kind of reemerged to the working world, I guess, I wouldn't say working, I was working before, wage-earning world. Around the end of last year, giving workshops on conversations across differences, because I felt from our observation, our country, our communities seemed to be just very divisive and doing a lot of talking at one another rather than listening to. And that was something that was really important to me, that I wanted to make a difference in. I'm also an educational consultant, because most of my research, I've been doing research in education for the past 10 years. So I do consulting work to the Department of Education, and I'm also still teaching law. I'm a legal instructor at the Department of Public Safety Standards and training a new legal instructor with them, teaching at the Basic Police Academy. So before I say a little bit, I guess, about why I wanted to run, I want to thank you all. I wasn't able to come to your last city council meeting, but I had spoken at Salem City Council about Measure 105. And so as a resident of Oregon, as a resident of Marion County, and like I said, your neighbor to the south, who has frequently come up here to McNary in particular for music and drama and sports over the years, I am really grateful to you guys for taking such a strong leadership stance and standing in opposition to ballot Measure 105 and standing for, you know, the safety and community of our residents. Being a person of color, a woman of color, and having black sons, I have experienced, well, I guess they really experienced racial profiling here in Oregon. Our middle, our second son, younger son, was, someone decided that he looked suspicious while waiting at the city bus stop to get to his early bird class in the morning, and called 911, and then proceeded to follow him till he got off the, the bus and continued to follow him while he was walking, until the cops arrived to question him. So he ended up missing his, his class that day. So for me, it's kind of the, you do the things that, you know, you're told to do, you do well in school, you go to, you try to do extra things, but yet and still, you know, people have notions. And so for you guys to, to take that stance is extremely meaningful to me, because that's not something that I want, you know, other people in our community to have to go through, or for, you know, some people to feel emboldened, to subject people to, you know, this extra layer of scrutiny and disruption in their lives, just because of their color or their skin. So again, I just want to say thank you. I really am extremely grateful and appreciative of the leadership and the stance that you guys took on that. As a candidate, I've been walking across the county and talking to a lot of people, including residents here in Kaiser, and have had several conversations, and well, I guess more than conversations with Counselor Herrera and also Counselor Rich Walsh, and was fortunate enough to have time to go to one of Mayor Clark's coffees, and she made time in her schedule to meet with me a few other times and learn about, not just some of the challenges that Kaiser's facing, but again, some of the really amazing things that you guys are doing. And so I really appreciate that. I decided to run for county commissioner because it was a position from which I could help my community. There's just so much, as you guys are well aware, that the county does, and to be able to work in that position, I had a conversation with Commissioner Clarkson, well, yeah, Janet Clark.
Carlson.
Carlson. I was like Clark, Carlson, like names. And I saw her earlier today, Commissioner Carlson. And one of the things she talked to me about was just how she had been doing a lot of work in the community before becoming commissioner, but just how much more she was able to do from that position. And so I really want to be able to make a difference in working with our affordable housing and homelessness issue that we've kind of seen increasing in recent years, as well as increasing the access to the health services that Marion County provides. And I think we've been going and we're starting to go, you know, in the right direction on a lot of things, and I really just want to continue pushing, you know, those efforts. And in part- And in particular, really work on bringing community together and having a very purposeful and collaborative look as we deal with some of the issues facing our county, particular growth and the infrastructure issues that come with that. As a public school teacher and as a policy advisor for several years, I've seen a lot of policy be made without consulting the people that are affected by that policy or the people who do that work on the ground. So for me, in terms of government, that's one of the most important things going forward, is that we talk to the people who are affected by policies and get their input on the ground floor of creating solutions. So thank you guys very much for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate that, and also the service to that, to our community that you've already been doing. I'm glad, we're glad you chose Oregon to land. Are there any questions for Ms. Crier? All right, thank you so much. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, batting cleanup. Dylan Duran. Let's talk about the internet.
Yes, please. So again, I'm Dylan. I live here in Kaiser. So I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about internet. I was here in, I think, May of last year to talk about how I think that it would be great if we had a different internet option in addition to the services that we have in Kaiser, namely Comcast and CenturyLink, which I think aren't good enough. We can do better. So I just offered the general idea that I think that we could have a community paid for and provided internet service. And since then, I've done a lot more research, talked to some people all over the community. So I've been to a couple of neighborhood community events and talked to people generally to really interested community members who have lots of questions and are, in the most part, really positive on it. I guess the only not positivity I've gotten is skepticism, not negativity, just uncertainty, because it's a, it's not something a lot of people are fluent in, all the different technical aspects of rolling out an internet service, how you would pay for it, how it would work, what the difference is between a community-provided internet service and a commercial internet service, all sorts of questions that can be asked. And, yeah, just technical fluency on that is a hard thing to explain. So in the, in the past year and a half, I've talked to, I actually invited a guy from, named Jeff Christensen, from Salt Lake City in Utah, who is the CEO of a organization called Entry Point Networks. And they have a pretty cool method that they've used in several cities, one in Amund, Idaho, for basically doing like an opt-in bond to pay for the rollout of a community broadband network. And that's just one of the available options. I know that they're working with a couple of other cities here in Oregon right now to move forward on a network like that, paid for like that. And they've offered to come in and talk with the council, and they offer like strategy developing services for free. We don't have to end up going with that method, but they'll help us develop a strategy for rolling out a broadband community network. Actually, Mayor Clark here attended that meeting with Jeff, and it was really interesting. They've got a lot of different things. It's not just getting cheaper Netflix. It's also providing a crazy amount of innovative technologies and services that we can't really think of right now because we don't have it. With a larger pipe of internet for a much lower cost, connecting not only to the outside world and services like Netflix and YouTube and all those other things that we all are definitely going to want, people generally probably wanted, when we brought in electricity, they wanted to turn on their lights. And then we, of course, invented the radio and television and all these other things that we now can't live without, but that initial rollout of electricity was for much less. And the internet's the same way. We will have communication networks, services for protecting our schools and businesses, biomedical services, all sorts of things that we can't even really think of right now, because it's not, the infrastructure's not there yet. So anyway, I just wanted to bring it up again. Know that people in the community are very interested in this, and I think it'd be great if we continued to move on it.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Councilor Ferrera.
Hey, Dylan, I got a question. Who's, is there a community nearby that has a community network or something similar that you're talking about here? Is Independence one of them?
Yeah, so there are a bunch of different ways to roll out something like this. And Independence has a community-provided network that is not like a commercial service like Comcast. Comcast wouldn't roll out to them. So Independence and Monmouth banded together to pay for a network rollout, yeah.
And Hillsborough is now doing a network throughout the city as well. There's another model there as well that I just read about. I think it was in, I think it was the latest LO, League of Oregon Cities talking about that. It was, I pulled the article out. Also, and I mentioned this to, Dylan's very aware of this, and most of you may have gotten the information I sent out regarding the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission decided a couple weeks ago that they were going to issue a nationwide preemption on local municipalities like us to be able to charge the franchise fees we are at the current levels as they roll out the 5G. And so this was met immediately with a very strong response on pretty much all levels from cities and counties across the country where we're going to be continuing that conversation in court. Because a nationwide presumption on local control of our rights of way was something that a lot of localities, including the League of Oregon Cities, did not take kindly to. So that conversation will be developing, but the League of Oregon Cities is working with the national leagues and leagues from other states as well to make sure that we have a strong voice in how we manage the rights of way, the property of the people in this regard as well. But on larger scale, we have the digital divide, we have the need for internet, and you're right, for business, 5G is coming, and we want to be competitive. So with that, Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So are we looking, or I should say you, are you looking at following the example of, for example, Independence, is doing it in the same kind of manner they did? Because after we spoke prior, I mean, this is not a new conversation, and we've chatted before about it, I did talk to their city manager, and they had some huge concerns about the way that they have done it and their expenses, and that it costs the city a lot more than they had agreed. And so I know we're not independents, but I would hope that we could find out and learn from their mistakes as well before we get into a financial conversation that, you know, on behalf of all the citizens.
Yeah. I would probably not want to repeat what they've done. They said it took like a decade to recoup the costs that it took to put into it. The Entry Points worked with a couple of other places, and their method may not yet be viable in Oregon. We're not really sure about that yet. But the, the way that they offer an opt-in bond basically offers little risk to both the city and the citizens, because only the people who are interested in it have to foot the bill for it at first. If you want to access the service later on and you didn't opt in, you have, you have to pay into it. But it requires a very low barrier of entry for, I think it's like 30% of an area has to be interested and willing to pay for it in order to pay for the expense of rolling it out. So that's one of the options, and the reason that they've been successful with that is just because the, the political and financial risks are both very low.
So with all of the changes in the fiber of technology, the issues surrounding the Federal Communications Commission and so forth, and I've, I've talked with the city manager about this, I really believe at some point we're going to need to do a work session just to make sure that we understand what the lay of the land is, what are the options that are now available, that weren't available two, three, five, 10 years ago, because the technology keeps changing. So we in our community can have a very informed conversation about what this looks like, but we want to make sure that Kaiser remains competitive and viable for our businesses as well as our residences, because many of the trade sectors and the economic sectors that were identified for this community rely very heavily on access to data and reliable data. So I think it's a conversation that we need to engage in at some point, and I think the point has probably arrived for us to dive in. Don't know what we don't know, but we're going to find out.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Keep, keep pressing. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. I don't know if anybody else signed up for public testimony? Anyone else want to jump in? Okay. All right then, let's go ahead then to administrative action. The first is item A, a request for a letter supporting the return of commercial air service to Salem Municipal Airport. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I had a whole staff report here, but it's already been given to you by the gentlemen in the audience. And so the question before you is whether or not the city of Kaiser, the city council, should direct the staff to prepare a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support to bring back commercial air service to the Salem Municipal Airport.
Thank you very much. So are there any questions on going forward? So this would be to direct staff to draft that letter. However, I would ask that the, the direction would be to direct staff to draft a letter for the council president to sign. And the reason is I work at the Department of Aviation, and while I do not have any direct, any actual or potential conflict of interest, I want to make sure anything coming from Kaiser for this grant program have a degree of separation, just for clarity, so there's no questions in the office. So with that, that would be my one request. All right, Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare a resolution authorizing the council president to sign a letter of support to bring back commercial air service to the Salem Municipal Airport.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to prepare a resolution authorizing the council president to sign a letter of support to bring back commercial air service to the Salem Municipal Airport. Any further discussion? Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a, is a very exciting project and process, so I really appreciate it that we're at this point where we're moving the ball down the, down the field here. I do want to note, just for the record, I've been involved as a representative for the Salem Chamber since I'm, serve as Chamber President-elect presently. So I would just want to declare a potential conflict of interest, talking with our council on that, just, I don't have any, I don't have a dog in this hunt, other than just my personal interest in getting the air service back to this area, so, but I just want to make sure and keep the record clear on that point. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else? Council Ryan.
Did we have a second?
Yes, we did. Council Ferrera seconded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. All right.
Now make it happen.
Looking forward to not having to drive to Portland. All right, item 8B, which is a waiver for the community center rental fee for the Kaiser Community Band. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the second time tonight that somebody has given my staff report for me. Mr. Koenig came earlier and discussed this matter with you, and you have a series of options available to you listed in the staff report. We recommend that you review them and decide how you would like to process the request for waiver of fees. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? I thought we had done this.
But what we did before was for the November concert. This is for the December concert.
Oh, this is for December, okay.
I understand, but I have a question about him wanting us to waive the insurance requirement. This is for Tracy. So Tracy, could you explain, or Shannon, could you explain that for us, please, on events?
Sure. And I'd want to thank Tracy, because I asked her to check on some things. So most folks that use the event center have insurance of some sort, even household owners, you know, on your homeowners, you can get an endorsement for that. The band apparently doesn't have any liability insurance at all, and so they would not be able to get an endorsement on their current insurance, like most people do, so they'd have to get a standalone policy. And it depends on what you consider reasonable cost or not, but I asked Tracy to check, and we do have a few people that come in like this, that don't have a policy. And there's three or four options. They range from $100 to $200, basically, for that. And my concern, of course, is waiving insurance kind of sets a precedent. So if you waive insurance for this organization, there'll be a request probably in the future for that. And, you know, I don't, I'm sure it's a very good cause, but like I told somebody recently, I, you know, I'd kind of like to get insurance endorsements even from Santa Claus, so, I mean, it's important to kind of maintain that. The flip side of that is, for council's consideration, obviously, pretty risk, low-risk venture, and it is not unheard of that we do that, but it's a precedent that I just would prefer not to see happen, so.
I still have another question. Can you tell me what we did two weeks ago? I think, I think we did the insurance and the, and the staff?
Insurance, yeah.
No? Just the insurance?
Yeah, you waived everything but insurance.
Okay, thank you.
And so they're asking that you sort of retroactively go back, readdress that issue, waive the insurance for that event, and then also everything, including insurance for the next event.
I'll make a motion for discussion, then. Thank you.
Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council waive every fee but the insurance, as that is a necessary thing, so.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council waive the room rental fees, security cleaning deposit, staffing costs, but require insurance for the December Kaiser Community Band concert.
Not the insurance.
I said, but require the insurance.
Oh, but, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't.
I didn't hear the but. That's okay.
All right, discussion. Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are we now including two dates? Are this, are we still on the one date?
This is the second date, the December date, the Christmas concert.
We already did the November one, so this is a second one.
Okay, plus they're requesting the insurance from the past, from the one we did two weeks ago. Is that correct?
That was the request, that's not part of the motion.
Understood. Thank you, I just want to be clear.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay, Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know this is a great event, and it's free to the, free to the community, and people come in, but the insurance waiver, I think, as, as the counselor has, Shannon has mentioned to us, we don't want to set a precedence for other nonprofits, because I, I know it's hard sometimes to get those insurance waivers, but they can be added to somebody's homeowner's policy if need be for this type of event, because you don't have alcohol or anything like that, so you might want to check into that. But I, I think, I think we still need to require that of anyone that's having an event here, whether we waive the fees or not. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ryan, Reed, and then Council Ferrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And again, this is a question for Tracy, as far as what we've done with the Kaiser Community Band in the past in terms of insurance?
I don't recall that they had an insurance certificate the last time they were here. Two years ago?
I think so.
Last year.
I don't remember.
I don't remember. I don't recall, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
May I speak? We have not paid an insurance, or had an insurance certificate for last year's Veterans Concert, last year's Christmas Concert, or the previous year's.
So for the viewing audience, what was said was that insurance was not required last year or the year before, so.
No, I was.
Counsel, Mr. Johnson.
I'm not sure how that happened. I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't characterize it as insurance wasn't required. I don't think our office was asked, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure that the message got down that, that it should have been required, so.
Thank you. Council Ferrera.
I kind of agree with the Councilor Parsons. You know, these guys do a lot of, you know, they're tree lighting, they're always there, but the precedent is what gets me in terms of down the road, and, I mean, I will help, I'll donate, but I think this precedent, precedent would be a little bit off at this time. That's how I feel, so.
Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There you are. I just, I, we appreciate your, your service to the community and our veterans so much, and I don't, I hope I don't come across it as anything less than that. I, I have tried to remain consistent with all of our nonprofits, because I feel like it's really important to be consistent when we tell, you know, we can have such great need in our community, and sometimes it's cancer, you've heard me say this before, sometimes it's, you know, a fundraiser for a child or something. There's a lot of great need in our community, and we always honor the nonprofit, we have that rate, and for that reason- that rate, and for that reason, and that was why I was a no vote, but I would like to remain consistent with that, that we need to ask the same from everyone. So, I just want to make that clear, from the previous vote to the next vote, which was one concert, and it sounds like we'd done it before, and I was overruled, but I just feel like it's really important to say that for the community. We have this beautiful resource center, there is expenses for us as a city and to our citizens, and I think it's really important that we remain consistent. So, for that reason, I just want to mention that. Thank you.
Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, too, I just wanted to reiterate the point, that there is no fundraising going on at these concerts, that this is purely a community service, I guess it is. And I would suggest that, as Councilor Herrera brought up, I would suggest having some kind of a donation, kind of receptacle or whatever, available to help you cover the costs of insurance, because I also agree that we need to make sure that our policies are consistent with that, and I think we have been consistent. So, again, I would also be willing to contribute to that, and I think most of your audience members would, and you usually do pull in a pretty good audience. So, that would be my recommendation, too.
Just to kind of round it up, round it out, insurance not only protects the city, but it also protects the organization. And I think it's important, because by and large, nothing ever happens, and that it does what it does, it says, it's just in case. But I've been in groups where they said, well, maybe we really don't have to do that, and it is very, very important to have insurance that protects both, you know, the venue and the host of the event. So, I very strongly support the organizations using this building, having insurance to cover themselves, as well as the city. So, I will be supporting this motion. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. All right. Concert on the 19th of December. That takes us to the consent calendar. Council President Parsons, would you read what's on the consent calendar for tonight?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. There are six items on the consent calendar. A is a resolution declaring the city's intent to initiate a street lighting local improvement district in Snook Grove, and directing city engineer to make a survey and file a written report with the city recorder. B, a resolution authorizing the city attorney to sign amicus next, amiscus attorney agreement? I like, amicus, thank you. I'm not an attorney, I don't know. C, a resolution authorizing the chief of police to sign the agency agreement with Leeds Online. D is a resolution authorizing the finance director to purchase a printer from Dependable Printer Support for the legal department, and enter into a toner plus maintenance agreement for the printer. E is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Rico USA Inc. for Public Works copier. And F is approval of the September 17th regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any polls? Council President Parsons.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the consent calendar.
I second that.
The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. Last time, I think I picked on Councilor Anderson right out of the gates, so.
You did.
How about, Councilor Ryan? Shall I go and start with you?
You bet. So, short and sweet tonight. I, like many of you, attended the open house for Public Works and the fire, and I just want to compliment Public Works on what a great job they did on showing the stations and examples. It was really great to see how it all comes together, and they were very kid-friendly. I thought that was fabulous, and the kids had a great time. And it's always great to see the police dog at work, Buster. He's such a rock star. So, thank you for that. You know, honestly, I haven't had a lot of meetings for the city, on behalf of the city. It is, of course, campaign season, and everybody's out working really hard, and I've attended multiple debates, including here at the city, for our future city council. So, of course, very interested in that, and supporting our local candidates. If you haven't got the information about our local candidates in all the races, now's the time, and please vote, no matter what your vote is, just please show up and be a voice. That being said, I just want to, I mentioned to Tracy, I was going to send an email, but I think I just want to reiterate, I will be missing a few meetings. I'm missing October 29th, November 5th, regular session, excuse me, and also November 12th. So, I apologize for that, but I will be absent.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Reed.
Thank you. I also wanted to just mention the fire and Public Works open house, because I had my two little grandkids with me, and they had such fun. It was just a fantastic event, very kid-friendly, but not only that, but a real highlight for those little guys. And, you know, the swag bags and so forth that were available, there was just so many people that put such a lot of effort into that, and it was really greatly appreciated. So, thank you for all that you do with that. I had a Kaiser Heritage Board meeting, and that, and then a Kaiser Homegrown Theater Board meeting coming up. There are two events happening in the theater world this week. Kaiser Homegrown Theater's Quality of Life opens this Friday, and goes for three weekends. And then also, at McNary, their first play of the season, the fall play, is also opening this weekend, and it is only one weekend, it's the 18th, 19th, and 20th. And those performances are all at 7:00 with extra showings at matinees at 3:00 on Friday and 2:00 on Saturday. So, a lot of really great things happening with those, and just really good theater and lots of fun. McNary Athletics, I'm going to jump on this, since I'm first today, but. But, yeah. So, our, yes, both our boys soccer and our boys football are second in the league, and so, that is exciting, and our boys, they have about, I think, one week left of play before playoffs. And so, for football, despite a very difficult start, our boys are really kicking it up, and they beat Sprague, which is always a good thing, and also Bend. So, really proud of them. And also volleyball, not a great season, but we are proud of them and love them, too. And cross-country, both boys and girls are the other fall sports happening right now, and the girls soccer as well. And they are doing quite well. So, it's a lot of fun, a lot of really great opportunities for kids to get involved, and so, that is fantastic. Also, we have a growth conversation coming up on the 22nd, and that is really important for everybody to come and understand, and have a voice into how we grow as a community. So, you are welcome to that, either in person or on TV, and that is.
Broadcast, right? Okay.
Yeah, and that will be broadcast. And also, I guess right before that is a Kaiser Festival Advisory Board meeting that we will be doing. So, that is also, that's going to be an important meeting, because we're getting all our Christmas events together for that. So, if you have any events that you want communicated to the board, please do that, and we will make sure that they get included. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Council President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I had, I attended the Volunteer Coordinating Committee for Councilor Freeman, as she was out of town for work, and you saw what we did tonight. So, great candidates, they were all there, and so, most of them are just re-upping, and Sherry Godfrey had been on the K-PIC, I didn't even realize this, since like 2009.
Wow.
Yeah, so, she was like one of the original ones, I think, we put on that committee. Just so you know, she's been on there forever, and she still wants to be there forever, so.
Because it's fun.
That's fine, because it's fun. I also attended the Fire Department Public Works, and I thought it was well-attended also, and Buster was a rock star. He got that guy pretty good several times, so. It's always nice to watch that, because then we know he's really going to get the bad guy if we need him to. I also attended the candidate forum. I was a screener for questions, so I was not able to go to the traffic safety and bike ways, I'll give a report on that next time. Upcoming Dearborn, I think we're on stab till tomorrow at 9:00 AM, we're opening. We're still on board, he's not here, but I hope we are. We're still on board. Okay, awesome. At 9:00 AM.
Yes, it is.
9:00 AM, yep.
It will open.
And it will open, it will open everybody. You can go down Dearborn now, no more Chamala.
I'm sorry, I've changed that on my calendar so many times.
I know, I know. But it's happening, we're there. Just go to sleep and wake up, and we're there, okay? And then, on the 22nd, of course, we have the Growth Workshop I'll be attending. Also, I have a Kaiser Little League Task Force meeting on the 24th. And then, on the 25th, we have the Marion County Giving People a Second Chance Breakfast at, it's at the Convention Center this year, because we just outgrew Broadway Commons. We just outgrew it totally. So, that's always a fun event, and they bring these people in, and the success stories and the successes are really great in this program. So, I urge anyone that needs, wants to go to, that's on, no, that's on the 25th.
25th.
At 7:00 AM.
30.
7:30?
7:30.
Be there early.
Be there early, yeah, okay. And then, let me see, and then, yes, on Monday, we have, the Kaiser Festival Advisor Board is now meeting at 5:00 instead of 6:00, because of our growth at 6:00. So, all those who attend that or would like to know, that's at 5:00, and hopefully, we'll have some people from the community. We do a holiday calendar, starting like now, all the way through the 1st of January, so that we can publish it on the city Kaiser website, Chamber website, all these places, so people will know what our community does during the holidays, tree lighting, parade, everything. So, it's always fun to get all these people together and figure out what's going on. And then, I think, I think that's all I have. That's it.
Lots going on. Councilor Herrera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Marlene pretty much said everything I was going to say.
Oh, good, then you don't have to say anything.
Actually, you know, I want to say that the open house was probably the best open house that I've been to in 10 or 15 years. It was very good, and it was well-organized, and, you know, I participated in those things from the inside before, and, you know, it's kind of a ruckus, and I thought they did a wonderful job, so. Also, I attended the, I went over to the Willamette Law Center over there and got to see my old friend Rocky Baria, who went and gave an excellent speech, and talked about the originals of the 105. And then, after that, I got to the candidates forum, which was very, I thought it was pretty good. All the candidates did a great job, I thought, you know, and we're very fortunate. I keep saying that, because, you know, after talking to other cities and other councils, I think that we're very fortunate with our candidates, so. That's enough of that. Kaiser United today, I had a lunch with a couple of folks who, I guess, are gone, and that was very nice. Also, I wanted to congratulate McNary on their, you ruined it for me.
Go ahead.
Go to the doctor.
It was a great win for McNary. They went over to Bend, which is always hard when you travel that far and play a good team, and they really showed, I mean, they started off with some tough schedule, and, you know, those losses at the beginning made them tougher, and I really believe that Jeff Oven and Coach Oven is doing a wonderful job.
And soccer beat Bend, so it was, you know, a beating Bend kind of weekend.
Exactly. By the way, there was another win that weekend, that Saturday, it was just wonderful, I was there, and it was just amazing, and that was beating the Washington Dogs, and I, you know, that was just amazing.
You knew that, how?
I won my bet, I won my bet, so I was really happy about that. Coming up, I'll be, what's that?
The flag.
Oh, yeah. Coming up, I'll be going to the NAACP Tenth Annual Freedom Fund Banquet. I'll be attending, I was hoping Kaiser would participate, but, you know, maybe not.
I just got mine.
I will be attending that, and to see my good friend Benny, but that's a really good cause. I attended it last year with one of our, I believe it was Lance Sineman that went with me, and that was very, very lightning, very good stuff. Last thing I want to say is that tomorrow's the last day to register to vote, young people out there. Go register to vote. Like I say, it doesn't matter who you vote, why you vote, but it's very important that we are involved in the process, and tomorrow's the last day. So, go out there and register, you can do it online, it's really simple. I think that's all I got. Oh, we had the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Commission, we met over at Chomekina, and had a great meeting there. After that, we had parks. So, I ran over here, and Dylan did a great job explaining what was going on, and pretty much that's all I got.
Thursday is the Gubser.
Pardon?
Thursday, Gubser.
Gubser.
Oh, yeah, Thursday, Gubser, Neighborhood Association meeting, Thursday, and will be attended by my good friend right here, Councilor Parsons. That's all, and like I said, don't forget to register to vote, it's so important. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few things. Oh, I was going to say, I don't like the color purple when it's associated with a certain university in North here, so. I, as a Beaver, I was glad, that's always a good day when U-Dub loses. Let's see, I attended on October 3rd the Claggett Creek Watershed Council, a little bit late to that, so I missed a couple of the things, but one, they've got a tree planting coming up on November 3rd at the Rotary Arboretum down at Kaiser Rapids Park. So, continuing on that legacy down there, things are going really, really well. Hats off to, really to former Councilor Mark Calier, just really spearheading that, as well as all of the other volunteers associated with that. They also did another recap of their soggy day at the park, that was just so unbelievably successful. Man, it's kind of like, okay, how can we improve on that? And so, that will be coming up April 20th, 2019, so long-range planning there, but, you know, just some great, great volunteer work there. So, encourage folks to get out, see our parks, enjoy them, experience them, they've got some great activities in store for you, to really get people educated on getting out into the outdoors there as well. I'm going to save one other thing for last here. October 6th, I was at, actually participated in the Center for Hope and Safety Steps, the Safety Run that was held. It's a 5K and a 10K, I did the 5K, much to the chagrin of my knees. But, I was really, it was really great to see us take action on that resolution tonight. That's really, really, I couldn't agree more with you, Madam Mayor, with regard to making our, recognizing and making our community more aware of what we can do to prevent domestic violence, and bring awareness to that awful issue. But, it's, I have to just compliment Center for Open Safety, great event, and what really makes that event is not just the people putting it together and participating, but it's the venue. So, Department of Public Safety and Standards Training Facility is closed to most outsiders, but they open it up for this nonprofit. So, it's a great way to get in there, see that facility, and help support a great organization at the same time. So, look for that next year. Really encourage folks to take part in that, a wonderful, wonderful event. October 10th, I attended the Kaiser Chamber Board Meeting. Again, just a great volunteer organization, that they've got lots that they're doing in our community, already planning for Iris Festival next year. Of course, we've got our, holiday season is going to get underway here in short order with respect to the November and December events. So, we've got the, of course, the runs are coming up on that, so Turkey Dash, and that's going to be, and I, oh, there it is, Thursday, November 22nd. I can't, I think that's, you can register online right now for that, so encourage folks to do that. Always a great, great, great way to do that.
Yep, it is, certainly it is.
November 22nd, Thursday, November 22nd will be the Turkey Dash. Jingle Dash is going to be Saturday, December 8th, but I'm not sure if they've got that open online yet. Then, other upcoming events that they'll be involved with, Holiday Lights Parade is set for Saturday, December 8th. They've got some great area, or great bands that they're bringing in for that as well, high school bands, along with a, more of an adult-type band, so, that's all. Well, it's comprised of adults, so, anyway, that's what I meant. And then, the final thing, just a couple of things, they've got, that I think it's And then, the final thing, just a couple of things they've got that I think it's worth... Always worth highlighting. The Kaiser Network of Women, NO, group, held another very successful fundraiser, the Percy Fundraiser. Looked really, really fun, and they just raised a lot of money for that. It's gonna do some great things in the community at holiday time. And then, the Men of... Men... Oh, God, I can't remember what.
Men of Action.
Men of Action. Thank you, sir. Of Kaiser, MAC. They... They're also involved in a couple of areas that they highlighted there that I wanna just mention, that is, they helped out with... To kinda prepare for the winter months, the Boys and Girls Club Garden over at Kennedy Elementary. And then, also, there was a family that suffered a fire here in our area. They were helpful and really came forward to help support that, come around that family. So, I think it's always cool to be able to highlight some of those things in which our business community is really coming forward and helping out and making a difference in this community as well. I'm sorry, I usually don't go on for a lengthy period of time, but I do just have a few things I gotta just to highlight. I don't. I try not to. This... Actually, later this week, one thing that is... I would... For me, it's one of the highlights of the year, and that is the Family Builder... Building Blocks, the Dream Builder Lunch. That'll be Thursday, October 18th, at noon to one... From noon to 1:00 down to Salem Convention Center. That's always an awesome event for one of our absolutely outstanding local organizations, doing some amazing work and really making a difference in the lives of people in our community, for kids and families that depend on their services, that really need those services. The... It's already been mentioned about the Dearborn Bridge ribbon cutting. I'm gonna be there for... In a couple of capacities for here as a counselor, as well as representative for my company. And then, just final thing on football. I did happen to make it over for the freshman game. My wife and younger son made it to the varsity game as well. And I'll just tell ya, it's a long ways to go, but it is one of the most beautiful venues to watch football in the state. I mean, when you're sitting there, and you can see the mountains in the background, it's just stunning. And the welcome that the community provided was really, really nice, too. So, really, hats off to those folks as well. Always love going to Central Oregon and getting those victories. That was awesome, too. So...
Go Salons.
The two games coming up this... One this week and one next week are really important, so I really encourage the residents of this community to turn out. We're facing West Salem this week. So, we gotta turn out in force and beat those dirty dogs, because they're in first place. So, wouldn't that be cool, if we could beat West Salem? But it's at West Salem, so that's gonna be... That's always a challenging venue. And then, the final one is gonna be South Salem. That'll be the final game of the year, I believe. So, hopefully, we can get into the play... I think we'll get into the playoffs, so hopefully, we've got that as well. And then, the final thing I wanna just point out, and that was... It was after the Sprague game that we found out that the... Just real tragic loss that occurred in this... In our community. And just because we've been involved with music, it was really, really heartbreaking to hear about Dr. Brown losing their child. Dr. Brown, longtime awesome music director or choir director at Sprague High School. And it's just been so awesome to see that community come around, that family. And I also know, in some conversations that I've had with other folks in the choir community, choir community in this district, that they've also been really stepping forward as well. So, that's a great, great thing to just see happen in this. And, you know, a very challenging issue that I hope that we can provide some more education to prevent any further suicides. We really... That's really a terrible situation to happen to any parent. So, hopefully, you know, we can get the education out, make folks aware of that, and really see what we can do in that regard. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Before I jump in, I'm gonna go to our youth counselor, Ms. Ferris.
Hi. I have a few things on my list this time. First of all, Councilor Reed talked about the fall play that is in... Started... Opening in three days, on the 18th, 19th, and 20th. Death by Design is going to be played at McNary. Also, the Blood Drive is happening at McNary on 30th, so that's interesting.
It's your vampire on.
So, the McNary Honor Choir Concert, as well as the Choir Fall Concert, is on the 23rd and 25th respectively, both at 7:00 PM. So, come, it's gonna be a blast. The PSETs were last Wednesday, just a noteworthy occurrence each year. College Week is coming up from the 29th... October 29th to November 3rd, that... In which four state schools, which is Western Oregon University, Portland State University, OSU, and U of O are all coming to McNary, and will be doing onsite instant admissions, as well as college application workshops. So, spread the word. It's gonna be pretty amazing. In addition to that, McNary will also be having their College Spirit Week, in which you can always sport your college gear, whether you be alumni for teachers or hopeful college admissions for students. For a last thing for McNary is the College and Career Fair, also on the 29th, 6:00 to 8:00 at Chamekada, and it's open to all students. There will be scholarships and prizes, so please come. At CTEC, there will be a Salon Grand Opening on the 23rd, and the Salon hours will be from 8:30 to 1:00 PM. So, that would be amazing if you guys would just drop in, see what's happening. And the Fall Fashion Show is also from... On the 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00.
Wow. Thank you very much. Lots going on, so I'll try to wrap up. Just a couple more things. On the second was the Habitat for Humanity Hope Builders Breakfast. Habitat is one of our great community partners for providing affordable housing for families in our community. They've been doing that for decades and are looking for projects and volunteers to keep the good work going forward. I sent an email announcing the Strategic Economic Development Corporation, or SEDCOR, has a new president. He has been hired, and he will start on November 1st. His name is Eric Anderson, and he is not a stranger to this area. He has worked here in the past and is looking forward to coming back to working in the valley in this regard. And Chad Freeman has left SEDCOR in a very, very strong position, and more importantly, the Midwillamette Valley trade sector is in a much stronger position, thanks to his hard work. I've really enjoyed working with him as a board member, and I wish him all the best in his new ventures. The Midwillamette Valley Council of Governments Executive Board met on the 4th, and then the full board will meet tomorrow. Yep, tomorrow's a long day. Among other things, we're looking at the lease renewal and also working on legislative issues, so the three-county area, Marion, Pokon, Yamhill, can have a stronger voice on legislative issues than we have had in the past, things that really affect our ability to provide effective services to the residents of our communities. I wanna congratulate the Kaiser Community Library for another successful book sale. Paula's gonna come next month, and she will share the big numbers. Had a great turnout for that book sale, and thank you to all the people who donate. If you miss and you want to donate books, they are over... They will collect books for the spring sale, which always happens the weekend of the Iris Festival. I went to the grand opening for Napa Auto, which joined our Kaiser family of businesses. They're in the old location that was... Where Party Mart was located, and so be sure to stop by and welcome them, their business to the community. The owners are not new to the community. They've lived here over 20 years. So, another homegrown business. I joined Councilor Herrera. I'm surprised you didn't mention the Beacons. That was fabulous. We heard from former athletic director Mike McGann a few weeks ago, and they had the Beacons fundraiser, which helps provide funding, so students who cannot afford the participation fees can still participate in school sports. Very important for keeping students engaged in the areas of interest, especially in athletics. The Kaiser Heritage Foundation, Councilor Reed mentioned that. And then, I went to the lunch forum for SEDCOR on career technical education. I would encourage you to go to their website and look at the presentation from the different school districts that talked about what they're doing in career technical ed. Salem Kaiser is doing fabulous work, but so are Yamhill Carlton, North Marion, and Dallas. They've got some great programs, and in all cases, the graduation rates for the students who participate in career technical education are very high. In some cases, as high as into the 90s. So, 96% for CTEC, one of the other programs, 94%. And these students are getting hired straight out of school with their skills already in place for them to go to work and pull down family wage jobs. So, this is fabulous for our students and families, fabulous for our business sector. I attended on Friday the Union Gospel Mission, Hope Has a New Address, another great partner in providing services for people in our community to find hope and stability as they leave homelessness and find a path forward. And I wanna thank Ms. Cryer and for... Councilor Anderson for talking about how difficult it is when our people in our community suffer a loss in their family and friends due to suicide. And I joined over 1,500 people from our community on Saturday who were part of the Out of the Darkness Walk for Suicide Prevention. We are getting it out of the darkness. We are talking about this. We want people to know that there are resources, that there is hope, that we all care, and we're not going to just, you know, shove it aside or say, "Well, that just happens sometimes." We want it to happen never, and when it does happen, we want to be able to wrap our arms around families, and we want to wrap our arms around people who have needs and let them know resources are available. At the walk, they announced that over $65,000 have been raised, but the numbers were going up as they were counting, and on their website, they will publish that information. But more importantly, the resources that are available to help people and help families in crisis and before they reach crisis, so we can truly prevent suicide. I am so proud that our community is facing this head-on. Let's see, what else is coming up? The COG Board, I mentioned that. Kaiser Homegrown. And Coffee with Kathy will be at El Patron this Saturday at 10:00 o'clock. So, if you wanna talk about all things Kaiser, come on down between 10:00 and noon. And thank you to Carlos El Patron for being the host this month. Kaiser Little League Task Force, talked about that. And on Friday... Next Friday, I'll be attending OMPAC, which is the Oregon Municipal Planning Organization Consortium, also going to Bend. It must be time to go to Central Oregon. And then, we have Personal Policies on the 1st of November. And in case you weren't thinking this far ahead, on the 3rd of November, you get to change your clocks. Aren't we excited? I hate that. But until we get that change, there we're stuck. All right. Written Communications. No, I almost skipped you. That would be terrible.
It would be incredibly horrible.
It would be terribly horrible. Other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy?
I have nothing, thank you.
Tim?
Just a quick reminder, we're entering into the sewer reset period, so between now and the 1st of March, save as much water as you possibly can. Your pocketbook will appreciate it, because we're using this time period to set your sewer rates for the upcoming year. That's it. Thank you.
Chief.
Nothing.
Mr. Brown.
Because most of you have mentioned our upcoming Cost of Growth Workshop, we don't need to talk about that. Just next Monday at 6:00 here.
Councilor Johnson?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Written Communications. The letter we got from the NAACP for their upcoming event this Saturday, so I just got this, because I didn't check my mail, so my bad. But it's a great community-wide event, and everybody is welcome to go to their website and see about registration for that if they would like to attend. So, I wanna thank Benny Williams and that group for reaching out to the community, continuing to build bridges across... And relationships throughout our community. I did get a very nice note from Genie Sessoms on McGee Court, and it was a copy of a letter to the editor for the Kaiser Times. And just a note, I didn't get mine this week.
Did you pay the bill?
Yes, I did. It's on auto-pay. I respectfully submit the following letter to the editor, column for your newspaper, trusting you find it of interest. "Winter coming downs... Coming down. The birds have taken flight south, seeking the sun. Four-footed creatures have holed up with enough food to last the winter. We humans have bought out coats, sweaters, and hats to keep us warm when the temperatures drop. All very good. But what about the homeless men, women, and children whose only home is the dirt of the earth or the hard cold concrete? What can our City of Kaiser do for these homeless ones? I am glad I met, for the first time, our mayor of Kaiser, Kathy Clark. I met her at the 50-year celebration of Simanca Place for our homeless women and children located on River Road and Kaiser. I observed many things as our mayor, as we followed our Simanca House tour guide through the halls. She didn't come for a piece of cake or to give a speech. It was evident she came to access any need for this building where many women come to find new meaning for their lives. Mayor Clark, and I wanna insert here, our entire city council, is dedicated to helping homeless. I was told by more than one person. Our compassion reaches to the homeless. It is to be reckoned that it covers all the citizens of the county that we serve. I hope Mayor Clark, and again, our entire council, leadership, along with cooperation of all of our citizens, will put Kaiser on top for worthwhile achievements." And signed, Genie Sessoms. So, thank you. It was an absolute delight to meet you, and I hope that anybody who hasn't had a chance to tour Simanca House recently, get involved. They're working on a beautiful garden that's gonna be going in rehabbing one of their outdoor areas. That's gonna be a great project with the Network of Women and Men of Action, and there's